I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thank you and welcome for coming today. And at this moment, I'd like to turn the opening over to Counselor Susan Penner.
Thank you. As a city council, we make hundreds of decisions each year. Some are straightforward, some are more complex. Either way, we do our best to take the information we have received and the research we have done to make the best decisions as transparently as possible. Giving reasons for our decisions is important and goes a long way in keeping residents informed of why we decided what we did. We want residents to know that we have listened to them, considered the information, and are doing our best to make the right decision. Ultimately, as elected municipal representatives, our job is to do the work on behalf of residents, for residents to trust that if they had the same information we have, they would make the same decision. However, there are times when we have to make a decision or in the process of making a decision, we cannot discuss it publicly. For decisions like these, we have in-camera meetings. In-camera is a Latin term for private or confidential. As a rule of thumb, the reasons we meet in-camera have to do with issues relating to labor, legal, or land. So if the city would be negotiating a new contract with a union, that discussion would be done in camera. Or if a city would be in a lawsuit, discussions would take place in camera. The other situation that requires in-camera meetings is land. An example of this would be if we were to ghetto publicly about land that needs to be acquired for a city project, the price of that land could be inflated. At any given time, there may be projects in the works that we can't talk about until council has made a decision to move forward. So while this is done to protect the city and residents, it can end up putting council in a situation where we have information we want to share, or public feedback we want to gather, but are unable to do so until the project or decision has been made public. Essentially, the transparency has to come after the fact. In situations like these, as council, we hope that once the information is made public, residents will be able to understand why we made that decision. Regardless of whether council decisions are made at public meetings or in-camera, council does its best to keep the best interests of Steinbach and its residents at the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, we've got the, number three, we've got the agenda in front of us. Looking for motion to adopt the agenda? Counselor Swigster, second by Counselor Hebert. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I heard somewhere we're supposed to give reasons for our decisions, and I think we should adopt the agenda, it makes sense to me, so here's my reason.
Anything further?
I will second that. Thank you. I'd like to make my comment.
Go ahead, Counselor Hebert.
Parkway 2, it says on number six there, "Due to the infrastructure present, it is not possible to close the public reserve." I thought the comment was made, it would be very expensive to reroute and therefore it would be prohibitive.
On which, on the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're just adopting the agenda right now.
No, no comment.
Okay, thank you. Anything further of council? Anything in closing? I have nothing to add, so I'll call for the question. All those in favor? This carried. We have the, number four, we have the minutes of September 3rd, 2019, our regular council meeting that starts on page one. We've all had a chance to review them. Council, we're looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Siemens, second by Counselor Penner. Any comments?
My apologies.
Yes, sir.
We go down to number six. Due to the infrastructure present, it's not possible to close the sidewalk or the public reserve there. I just, I think the discussion was around that it was very expensive. We did decide to change it, and therefore it was prohibitive, opposed to that it was impossible.
Okay, so you want the...
Because of the expense, it was prohibitive.
Mr. Workin, do we need a motion to change this?
No, Mr. Mayor. If it's simply a correction of an error, that can be concluded, and council could approve the minutes as amended by a resolution.
Okay, so then we will, you're making a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Okay, secondar? We need a secondar for that, right? Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Workin?
If it's, if it's a correction, the motion is already on the floor. If it's, if it's a noted error, then that could be covered on the original motion.
Okay, so we don't need another motion?
No.
Okay, so council, we're all in favor? All for the question? Okay, those in favor, the minutes are adopted as directed. Any business arising from the minutes? Hate seeing none. We will go, it's just a little past 7:35, so we'll go directly to the public hearing. We'll go to 6A, the variance V, 2019-20, Reed Granite Park Boulevard. I will close the public, public meeting and open the public hearing. And Mr. Workin, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is application for variance file V-2019-20 for two Granite Park Boulevard. The owner and the applicants of the variance are Richard Snowden and Manifet Kilprazarak. Sorry if I, I hope I got that close.
Right, yeah.
Perfect. Purpose of the variance is the applicants are requesting to allow a fence along the front yard setback to be a height of four feet, whereas the maximum height of three feet is permitted in all residential zones. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is one piece of correspondence on file that was provided in the council agenda package. And with respect to, to the application, comments from administration is, is provided in, in the package. The applicant has indicated verbally to administration that only the posts of the proposed fence will exceed three feet in height, with the cross rails to be within the maximum height limits as provided under City of Steinbach zoning by law 2100. There is also information on page 18 where the owner has provided an example of the type of fence to be built. Recommendation is that city council approve the variance requested for the fence on the south side yard, subject only to the posts being permitted to exceed three-foot maximum height, with the posts limited to a maximum height overall of four feet.
Thank you, Mr. Workin. Is the applicant here today? Does the applicant wish to speak?
Please, yeah.
State your name and your address.
I'm Richard Snowden, number two Granite Park Boulevard. And the reason we're having the fence put up is to deter people from crossing over our property. And it's not the problem of people coming on the property, it's the people, it's the problem of the issues of not knowing who they are. We have a lot, a lot of people crossing their property with kids and stuff because they've got a school bus there and so forth. But in the wintertime as well, we have some people sometimes crossing their property, going to the back of the ditch in the park, using the access. So we like to put up a fence, the posts will be four feet, the rails would be a maximum of eight to nine inches above the three-foot mark, so they'd be staggered. So some will be two, three inches below the four foot, some would be about eight inches below. So it'd be like a, so that's a kind of detail. And they're going to be overlapped a bit, so. And we went with a three to four inch rail so that it's more visible through the fence because there's kids around there. And that's pretty much for the reason for that. It's for safety, and my daughter's outside quite a bit now, so when she comes in asking, say, there's somebody in our yard, who doesn't know who it is. So it's just a bit more of a deterrent to have people come around our property, use the sidewalk that was put in across the street instead of crossing over our yard.
Any questions? Counselor Swigster?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if the goal is to have a deterrent to neighbors crossing, why is a three-foot fence and keeping it to three foot not sufficient?
Well, do this one as high as possible, just to keep, keeping kids jumping over it. Four foot is better, but the main reason is the snow accumulation. We expanded our driveway in wintertime this summer, so in wintertime, all of our snow is going to be going into that side. And with the snow accumulation as well as me shoveling all my snow on there, we want it high enough, because if the snowmobile does go across there, there's a little, you're going to be pretty low as rail. So we just, we got rocks and stuff in there for landscaping, and we just don't want any damage to our fence. And it's the higher the better for recreational vehicles that do come across there. Safety issue, basically.
There's no site plan provided here. Are you planning on having the fence along the side of your building as well as your property? Or just the side?
Yeah, just, I'm just going to be putting up a brand-new fence of the whole property. The fence, the six-foot fence that's going in the back, it's going to be on the same footing as it's now. There's, is a section on, between me and the neighbor, there'll be a four-foot as well there, but it'll be, it'll be in the same design as the fence we have now somewhere, but the pickets are going to be horizontal instead. So there'll be a four, nobody's coming up just to the property marker. And that's to help, because he, because he used to put all this, all this snow, it would fall onto our side of the property. Because I'm using that side of the property, it's just concrete, I'm parking vehicles there now, it's, it's something for him to push the snow against. So I need to keep the snow in so it's not falling into the property. But again, it's for, to keep people, stir people around.
And so, sorry, would there also be fence on your frontage along Granite Park Boulevard?
Just, it'll be 26 feet from the Granite Park, and on the stone bridge, it'll be 18 feet from the curb. So we have like, have, I have a phone picture on my phone, but it's, we have landscape ties 26 feet up and 18 feet this, this way. And I have post stakes in there, and that's, that's where the fence is going to be. It's quite a ways from, it's not, it can obstruct the graders going by, it's just a deterrent for people to come and run and use the street kind of thing, or the sidewalk.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask you a few questions through you. I did take a couple of pictures and got them here. One of them, Mr. Teas, did you show the one about the railing? It's my understanding that's the type of railing you want?
Yeah, it's going to be somewhere to that, but it's going to...
Three and four?
Yeah, it's going to be three and four, and it's, it's going to be like this. So they will, the posts, they'll, they'll overlap about a foot going this way and then on this way, so they've got a bit of a detail to it. Instead of having to go in, because that way I have to go in between the posts, drill holes. This way, I can just anchor them to the outside of the posts and screw them in, and like bolt them to the, to the post itself, instead of having to go in between. That's, I'm having someone do the posts professionally, and I'll be doing the rails myself, so it's just a lot less labor and...
For the information of council here, Mr. Snowden lived down the road from me, I know him, talked to him numerous times, and I did have a discussion, so, just so that you know where I'm coming from. There's another picture, Mr. Teas, could you show that? Here's the front of your property.
Yeah.
Correct? So what you're asking for, the railway ties are 26 feet off the curb, and your fence is going to go on the other side of the curb, of the other side of the railway?
Yeah.
Okay, but you're also planning to have a fence on the right-hand side of where the dot driveway, between you and the neighbor?
Yeah.
And that's going to come how far?
Just up to the property marker.
So it's going to come 15 feet from the road?
I think it's, actually, I think it's 18 feet.
The property marker is, the side is 15.
Yeah, the post, yeah, the post will be 18 feet from the street.
And, could I have one more picture? And, okay. So on the side of the, there, the railway ties again, they don't match up with your fence in the back, they're to the, they're to the outside?
Yeah, it comes a little...
But again, your fence, that rail fence is going to be on the inside.
Yeah.
And you and I discussed also precedent setting, four foot versus three feet? Okay, just so that I'm there with council?
It's more just for visibility for wintertime, so if you have some, large snow accumulation, and someone's going through, it could be injury, there's rocks, we have boulders, like rocks for, for, for landscaping now. And it's one of the visible, visible, and like I said, deterrent for people just to jump over fences, the higher the better, to keep people out of that area. My daughter's going to be all the time and, and from people, like, it has to be visible, so if someone goes, they'll go through there, they see something there, so they go around instead. I don't care if they go on note, because they cut right across, I, so.
Counselor Swigster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to clarify, so with the issue that you're facing with people crossing your property, they are going close enough to the house that, that would be, like it's past where the fence would be?
Sometimes they come, you know, sometimes they come right past the window I'm sitting where I'm eating dinner.
And then one other, then one other follow-up. Have you spoken with your neighbors and what type of response have you gotten?
Yeah, my neighbor is more than happy to do it. I told him what's going to be happening, he's more than happy for that. I've mentioned to him what's going to happen when the fence is done, I'm going to be making sure it looks better than it was when we went in there, with suddenly the posts and that kind of stuff. And there's all the neighbors that have gone by who gave me the thumbs up and that kind of stuff. And there's, the way, the reason I'm keeping it open with the rails like that, not having one-by-sixes where it's enclosed more, we get a lot of people that are seniors walking up and down with the dogs, they're always stopping, they like to see the garden and so forth, so it's certainly the reason that it's, it's open, because it's something they enjoy. They always stop and compliment the yard and stuff like that, and it's a lot better. They said that when we first moved in, it was a bunch of weeds, so. We're trying to improve, make it look nice too, and not look a little so boxed in, but you know, like you have something right across the street here, it looks really nice, sorry. So it's like it's in the country, it's a country, it's a kind of fence, setting kind of thing, so.
Let's, Counselor.
I want to ask a question of the administration.
Yes.
Is the only issue here the height of the fence? If they were going with a three-foot fence, would they even be here or would that have gotten approved?
Under, under City of Steinbach zoning by law, a maximum three-foot fence is permitted in all residential zones within a front yard.
So the only issue here is...
Anything further, Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just have one, one question of clarification. Our understanding from previous discussions with the applicant that indicated that only the posts would exceed three feet in height, I just wanted to make sure that, that I heard correctly?
The post, the post itself will be these, these ground ones, like they use for, and they'll be four feet from the ground. And then the rail, first the top rail here would be about three, maybe three inches below the top, and then, then the second one would be below that, so that, the second load would be overlapped the other one, and that would be probably eight inches below the top.
Okay, I understand. So I just wanted to clarify for council's information, then the text that is in the agenda package is in error, and it, it is my understanding that the applicant is proposing that the cross rails will exceed nearly up to four feet, is what is being proposed.
That's the reason for, sorry, that's the reason for the height to be higher, because the top one will be three to, about three inches below the top, and the other one will be a lot lower. So if there's a lot, a lot of snow accumulation, you won't see that, you won't see the top post. So I want the second post, because I think it's going to be lower than the first, the top post, the rail here. Just want it the highest possible.
Question for administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To our city manager, can you just explain the rationale for why three feet was chosen as the height limit for the front yard fence? What's the, is it primarily safety reasons, visibility, aesthetics, or a combination of those?
My suspicion would be that the three-foot height was primarily one of safety, visibility, and over aesthetics, although that could have played a part, but that is a standard that the city zoning bylaw has had for decades.
Okay, so, Mr. Workin, just to clarify, on page three, second-to-last paragraph from the bottom, the very last sentence says, "The applicant has indicated that only the posts of the proposed fence will exceed three feet in height, with the cross rails to be within the maximum height limits as provided in the zoning bylaw." So that is the text you're saying to stroke off of our...
Based on the, yes, based on the information now provided by the applicant, the, it is understood that the intent is for the cross rails to reach...
Be higher than three feet.
At least three feet, nine inches.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Penner?
Question to administration. Does that change your recommendation?
Uh, no.
Does it change the recommendation, Counselor? Anything further from council? Yes, you can, you can sit down. Is there anyone here wishing to object to this file? Anyone here wishing to object to this file? Ask one more time, anyone here is wishing to object to this file? Okay, if there's nothing further, I will close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Siemens?
Wish to approve.
Secondar? Counselor Penner? Go ahead, Counselor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it makes a lot more sense when you view the property and take a look at what the applicant wants to do. The recommendation is to approve from administration, although there is some confusion now with the height of the posts. I think for me, when I stop at that stop sign, take a look, there won't be an obstruction of the view, important. I used to look when you're at that stop sign, just to the left, that's where the traffic is coming from. Traffic on the right is on the other side of the road. There is no sidewalk there, and the end result is, is the applicant could also plant a hedge there for some shoes, and let that go between, let it be fully belong. So the type of fence he's building and I think what he wants to do is...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I drove past that prior property this afternoon to look at, look at it. I do have seen that in instances where fences have caused major obstruction. A pretty example of that is lumber and brack when you're trying to turn, even though it's a chain-on fence, just the way that it's lined up, it's still very difficult to see through. However, after hearing where you plan on locating your fence, quite far off of the curb, I don't feel like there would be any traffic issues. Plus, this is, yes, this is a fence, but at the same time, it is also more of an aesthetic feature. You're being very mindful of being, having it open, not being, blocking your house in. So in terms of the aesthetics, I don't have any issues with that either. I do understand the argument of precedence, however, it's important to note that on variances, we deal with these on a case-by-case basis. I feel that this is a case where there shouldn't be a problem with that, so, without reason, I will...
Anything further, Counselor?
I think, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to start with a question for the mover, just to clarify. Is the, is the approval just a blanket approval, or is it approving the staff recommendation? Those are two different things.
Approved as applied.
Not the staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation is to approve the application.
The staff recommendation is to approve the variance requested for the fence, subject to only the fence posts being permitted to exceed the three-foot maximum height?
I had it as an open variation.
Does that change anything?
Okay, yeah, I'll comment then.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some reservations about, about this here, not because I doubt, I get some, I get the argument about that the fence is largely open because of the different posts there, but, you know, the reason that we have the three-foot requirement is because we don't want higher fences that are in the front yard, partly for visibility, partly aesthetically. And the staff recommendation is clear in terms of allowing the posts to be higher, but not the, the main parts of the fence, the sidebars. And I don't want to be creating a precedent where we're allowing fences that are higher than three feet, because I think there are good reasons to do so. So I would have been in favor of the staff recommendation, and that was the information we had here, was that, and that's still what I'd be in favor of, but I'm not prepared to, to support simply allowing a four-foot high fence. Because ultimately, what the variance is, is for four-foot fence in the front yard. That's the precedent that is set. So if it had been the recommendation that we have here, I would support it, but, but not as it is here.
Further?
Well, then, listening to that argument, understanding, then I would be open to an amendment to that.
You?
I'll make it a...
Okay, make the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sure, if that's an openness there, whether it's a friendly amendment or a formal one, I would, I would make, I would move an amendment that we approve the variance, subject to the conditions in the staff recommendation. So specifically, that we approve the variance requested for the fence on the south side yard, subject to only the fence posts being permitted to exceed the three-foot maximum height. That's correct.
Amendment, okay. Do we need a secondar for that?
If it's friendly...
Friendly, we don't need a secondar, okay. Okay, so the amendment will be that we're, so we're approving, the motion is to approve the amendment that nothing but the posts exceed four feet. Okay, good. Is there anything further? Anything in closing?
Yes, one more goal at this is, the applicant wants to put in four-foot posts, and so through friendly amendment, we have agreed as a council that nothing be over the height of three feet, so top of the rail should be under three feet. I would agree with that amendment.
Counselor? Yes, as, according to our package, according to the information we've had, I would agree with that motion too, and I would vote in favor of it, providing that none of the rails go above the three-foot mark, that only the posts stick over three feet, so, or over four, up to four feet. So I'll call for the question, all those in favor? Oh, that is carried. Thank you, Counsel. We will now turn to 6B, the conditional use C1201904. That is 3360PTH12. It starts on page 20. Mr. Workin, could you please introduce that file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Application for conditional use file CU-2019-04 for 360PTH12NORTH. The owner of the property is 3324346 Canada Inc., with the applicant for the conditional use being Big Freight Systems Inc. Purpose of the conditional use application is to allow a building to be moved into the city and onto the subject parcel for the purpose of temporary bathroom and shower facilities for employees. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file. There was additional information provided in council's mail bins earlier today, which is further submission from the applicant. Overall, the, with the conditional use application, the applicant indicates that washroom and shower facilities are required for an anticipated expansion of activities on the site. The application would meet zoning requirements. There are also images of the proposed building on file. And recommendation is that the conditional use be approved, subject to any necessary building code upgrades and requirements, that the building be compatible with the surrounding area. Further, that the building be permitted to remain on-site until September 30th, 2022. Would be three years from today's date.
Thank you, Mr. Workin. Is the applicant here? Would you like to take the podium and speak?
Actually, I have a question.
Well, just, yeah, just state your name and address.
Okay.
And then just present your, your idea, what you have prepared for us, and then we will ask questions then.
I'm Chain Moral, manager of driver services at Big Freight Systems. My address is 75 Penfield. Simply, we're running out of space as far as shower facilities and laundry facilities go. It'll be a 60-foot trailer, temporary for probably about three years. We purchased a company last year. We have an extra 85 to 90 drivers coming through the facility on a weekly basis. We have one male, one female shower, two washing machines, two drivers. So along with that, and we're involved, we've been working for a year now with the Manitoba provincial nominee program for bringing Filipino workers to the community. We are expecting our second for this Sunday. Now, it's going to be a couple of years before they bring their families over, so they're basically going to be homeless, living in their trucks. When they're coming through our facilities, they're going to have the opportunity to get their laundry done, showers, and just a place to relax.
And how many new people are you planning to bring to our community with this?
Well, the hopes are that they'll settle in Steinbach. Some of them will obviously settle in Winnipeg, we can't control that, but right now, there's 120 on the books. We were over to the Philippines last year for the, to interview them. There's going to be another trip sometime in, probably in the next six months, to interview a number more. I don't have that number. It's going to be a constant thing. One of the challenges in the trucking industry these days is finding qualified drivers to do the job, and with the growing number of trucking companies in Manitoba, it's becoming more and more competitive, so we hire all across Canada. Another need for this.
So you are hoping to have some of them relocate in Steinbach?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But for the temporary, you need, you need washing facilities for them?
Right. They're probably two years away from moving their families over here, once they get their PR cards. I understand it takes about two years, so it's, it's their choice where they settle, but we're working on different programs for building their credit. they settle, but we're working on different programs, uh, for, uh, building their credit, uh, working with credit union to have, uh, easy terms for a first-time home buyer, so all the things to draw them to this community.
Any questions, counsel? Is, uh, Counsel Reardon?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, another question for Mr. Morrow through you. Uh, I looked at the size of the building, we're talking sixty feet by twelve...
Correct, ten feet high.
Seven hundred and twenty square feet. I made a comment, I picked up on it, was the question I had earlier as well, was a place to relax, or you're also putting a lounge-type area on there where they can sit around in?
I'm a driver for thirty years. Uh, relaxing is doing your laundry, having a shower, and having a work area where you can sit down and do your paper while your laundry's being done.
Okay, so I just noticed in our part of the application, so you're putting in washrooms, putting in...
Showers.
Showers.
And laundry facility.
And, and an area where they relax. How, how big is that area going to be?
Uh, I'm not absolutely sure, probably maybe ten foot of the trailer. It's just an area where there's going to be a work desk and a couple chairs, but then this will come, well, they're either waiting on a shower or else waiting on their laundry.
If there's no, no, okay, Counsel Penner?
Administration?
Yes.
So, this is a, is this really a temporary facility? It's being packaged as a temporary facility, but given that it's three years, doesn't that make it a permanent? Does that have any, can you just kind of clarify, temporary versus permanent?
Yeah, um, the zoning, city zoning by law twenty-one hundred isn't, uh, abundantly clear, uh, as to a specific time limit for a temporary structure, uh, although generally, uh, reasonable, uh, interpretation means twelve months or less. Uh, due to specific circumstances, as, uh, indicated by the applicant, uh, they, uh, they are intending for this, uh, building to be used, uh, for a somewhat longer period, as they go through their recruiting process. Um, the recommendation is that the building, uh, would essentially go through, uh, all the required steps as any permanent structure would be, however, because of the, uh, nature of its construction, it's built on a steel frame, my understanding it is movable, uh, and for that purpose, uh, even though administration is recommending a, a three-year time limit, we are considering this still to be a temporary building.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Counselor?
For the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For you, uh, you said that after about two years, three years, you're hoping that families will come over and they'll be established to have homes, they don't need this facility, correct?
Correct.
Uh, are you, is there thoughts then, in two, three years, of continuing though to be bringing in new employees from the Philippines, different areas, that continue to be using this facility, or after three years, is it just going to not be needed anymore?
It'll be dependent on needs, needs of drivers.
Question, would you then, at that point, then consider building a permanent structure, or would the, the, this structure just continue to be used?
Uh, I don't have an answer for that. That would be up to the builder.
Anything further, counsel? Okay, I guess, uh, you can take a seat for now. Um, is there anyone here wishing to object to this file? Anyone here wishing to object? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here willing, wishing to object? Okay, at this time, I will, uh, close the, uh, public hearing and open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed?
I'll make the motion that we approve the conditional use, as subject to the, the staff recommendation.
Do I have a second, uh, Counsel Seaman? Go ahead, Counsel Swigster.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that, uh, the approving the conditional use is appropriate. Basically, what we're doing is we're allowing a, a, a building to be moved onto this property, uh, for the purpose of, uh, providing temporary bathroom facilities for employees. I think that the applicant has explained clearly what the, uh, rationale for this, that Big Freight is looking at expanding, and that this is, provides, uh, this provides some temporary washroom and such facilities for the, uh, the drivers that are being trained. Um, the, it's always good when businesses expand, and, uh, we're obviously welcoming of, of new people in our city. Um, in the long run, uh, we will have to see what, what happens here, but this is why the, the stack, the rec, staff recommendation is clear about, uh, that there's a requirement that, uh, there's, they have to follow building code upgrades, it may be required, a requirement also the building be compatible with the surrounding area, and, uh, and, uh, so ensuring that, uh, that these things, uh, these things are done, because we do want it to, uh, we do want it to appropriately fit in. With that being said, I think it's appropriate to be, uh, to, uh, be flexible here, and to facilitate a business that is doing its best to expand, and, uh, and of course, uh, when businesses expand, that's good for our community.
Anything further? Anything, counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm, I'm stuck in, in between a rock and a hard place as, as to say, because I, I don't want to start seeing us developing, uh, temporary buildings that could potentially be used permanently. I would like to see, uh, time limits put on this, I don't know if, to, to reapply at that point, um, for there to be a continued use of this, of this building. I feel like we should not be just allowing people to have temporary buildings in perpetuity on, on their properties, so I would like to make a friendly amendment, that after two years, this be reapplied and reevaluated, uh, if you're absolutely open to that amendment or not.
Uh, I'd like the administration to comment on whether that's possible, as far as under approvals.
Uh, yes, uh, this wasn't part of the, uh, written recommendation, it was added, uh, when I introduced the, the file. Recommendation is that the temporary use be permitted till September thirtieth, 2022, three years from now.
I would accept that as friendly amendment, that was, that would be three years. I would accept that.
Anything further? Anything further, counsel? Anything in your booth?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think that, uh, with the friendly amendment, I think that further clarifies that, uh, we don't want this to be the permanent solution. This is a, this is a temporary situation to facilitate some expected fast growth, but in the long run, especially if, if it's going to continue, there has to be a permanent structure there, so it's appropriate to reevaluate this in three years, and, and hopefully within three years, there's more permanent solution going to exist.
Thank you. Counsel, I will support this motion. I, I believe, right here, every, everyone wins. We have a business that wants to expand, they get to expand on a conditional bu, building that will help them, that will help their, their new drivers come in and, 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 and take care of duties that need to be done. We, as a city, we get protected, because we get to reevaluate, uh, maybe this does become permanent one day, we don't know, but this allows this, a business in our community to expand. This allows us to be economically ready to develop, and, uh, I think that's, that's really good. This is, this is, uh, the type of, uh, of decision that happens when we all be open, we all discuss, and we all share our opinions. I think there's a win here for everyone tonight. So I'll call for the question, all those in favor. Oh, that is carried. Thank you, counsel. There is no delegation tonight, and there are no, uh, reports and recommendations from the city manager, so, um, we will go straight to nine A. Accounts payable at the back of the book. Counsel, we've all had a chance to go over it, um, looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Heaver, second by Counsel Heaver. Uh, any comments?
No comments. Self-explanatory.
Anything further?
No comments.
Okay, then we'll call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Uh, we'll go to nine B, the financial statements for ending August twentieth, uh, twenty nineteen, sorry. They're also in the back of the books, we've had a chance to review them, looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Penner. Any comments? Okay. Call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Counsel, uh, we are going to, uh, nine C, these are the building permits for August, page, uh, thirty-three. Uh, we had a great August, we had, uh, just over five million dollars in permits pulled. That, uh, brings our total for the year to just over twenty-five million, with another twelve dwelling units added, or ninety-three dwelling units total for the year. But something I want to, uh, to bring your attention to, counsel, is that this, this month, uh, I, I haven't done it before, and I guess I should do it every month, but I just looked and I broke out the actual, the commercial development that happened in our community, and of the five point one million, just over three million dollars was, permits pulled for commercial development. That is a fifty-eight percent of our permits have gone to commercial development. I think we've had a great month, guys. We've had a, a really good month of where our, our commercial has grown farther and faster than our residential has. So I'm just looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Penner, Counsel Jake Heaver, any comments?
After that captivating speech, I cannot approve it.
Anything further, counsel? Anything more? Call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Sometimes I don't know if you're complimenting me or making fun of me, but I'll take it anyways. Nine D, one of our council favorites, excavator's license, page thirty-four, looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Heaver, second by Counsel Penner. Any comments?
No comments, pretty simple.
Still don't know why this is on here.
Call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. There is, uh, okay, uh, any questions of counsel? Uh, there are no correspondence, other business, uh, we're looking for an adjournment. Uh, motion for adjourn, uh, Counsel Heaver, second by Counsel Heaver. Over the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Next regular council meeting is Tuesday, October first, 2019, at seven thirty PM. Thank you, counsel.